I'd like to reconvene the meeting. Next up on the agenda is discussion consideration for approval of proposed timeline for construction.
So, if Councilmember Scoot, if you don't mind, I'll take over this.
Yeah.
So, she had sent over the timeline back in December to everyone. I looked at it, I reviewed it, I advised it based on some of the statutory requirements they would have. And then she had also sent another one for me to review just as an alternate based on what's, no changes made to the plans. So, that was sent out to you all today sometime, I believe, yesterday?
Last night, yeah.
Last night, I'm sorry. Basically, I don't need to go through all of it. It's just a projected timeline in which we try, we would try to follow. And obviously, we have to get to the architect and make sure that they can go through some of this as well. But this is basically what we would tentatively approve based on trying to set staff goals. So, with that said, basically, we would...
The blue one? I'm sorry, is it the blue one?
Yes, yes. We would contact the architect tomorrow to talk about doing a contract amendment to then to add some some services to their existing contract. We would allow them to start the RFP process, invitation to bid process, same thing. We'll use those terms interchangeably to establish the single-prime construction model. We would wish to go out to bid, go down the timeline roughly in the middle of February. And all these meet statutory requirements. Melanie, you can review those in further detail if you need to. So, when y'all make a motion to approve this, we can make it contingent upon the attorney's review. But basically, this timeline would establish us awarding the contract for the bids in the March 12 meeting with hopefully breaking around sometime in the late spring or early summer.
Oh, kind of back up, sorry. February 28, we would stuff the field bids?
Yes, and that would be something which the staff does.
But we can be here for that.
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
And you can be here for the bid opening as well. It's all...
Right.
Is that like a thing?
It is. We did that for the roads.
I haven't done it.
It was very exciting when we went to a bid opening for the roads and no one showed, no bids were... No bids were open because nobody bid.
We do have to receive three bids or we have to actually go out for bid again. So, but it's something we need to keep in mind is that we really need to make sure we get three bids.
Well, we need to keep in mind that we may get, you never know, we may just ridiculous bids like we did on the road.
Well, given that where we're at right now building-wise and how things are growing, I suspect that very likely that they're like, "Well, if you want it, here's what you're going to pay and we'll do it" and stuff, so...
I have, per our meeting with the architect, where he recommended us to go out and send some emails out to potential vendors to get just high-level numbers. I have gotten some back as low as $180 to as high as $350 per square foot, so...
Oh, I was like, "A hundred eighty thousand dollars, woo, save some money."
That'd be $180 a foot.
I got it, yeah.
So, we really don't know until we actually get, I mean, those are so different. We really...
Three hundred...
Well, just, I, when I asked Wesley Chapel, and this was six years ago, when they built that, they actually, it came out to $216 a square foot. So, they gave me the square footage, 13, and that did not include furniture. This is per the clerk, so...
That's the numbers, I think. We had, Chris had done some research and it was $216.
And I think even the architect agreed that my number, where I was thinking it would be in the $230, $240, $250 range, which is...
So, we will have discussions in February. I do have some other things I need to talk to y'all about as far as budgeting is concerned. We'll address those in February because we're going to have to move some capital funds around to pay cash for the project. And we'll have that discussion at our budget retreat if y'all are okay with that on the session.
Is this a comfortable schedule, please?
That's what I asked.
Yeah, I'm fine with this. I mean, it's aggressive, but I mean...
But when, I know we talked about hiring a contractor to kind of take this on and stuff. So, when is that?
We could talk about doing a construction at-risk manager. I think that the architect can help us through this process and we don't have to, you know, incur that expense of a construction at risk. They usually will charge a percentage cost of the actual award. So, that is an expense that I'm not sure that we would be able to afford at this time. I think we just need to use the services that we have available to us and try to get it done the best we can.
Okay.
If you were building a new house and you hired a general contractor, you oversee it, you could hire the architect to stop anything from happening. But you wouldn't hire a second general contractor to inspect the first general contractor unless you're going to throw a shootout. That's my opinion. But having an architect step in sometimes, but I wouldn't do more than... If we decided to do that, if you decided that was the best thing to do, I wouldn't have more than how, other than a few critical half times. They're not, they're not going to do inspect every single day. That's what economics is for.
So, this timeline, again, is a basis for what we would try to accomplish. And obviously, we would need to have the authority to amend it and change it as we need to. This would kind of be the basis for what we try to adhere to and stick to. So, if y'all are okay with it on the surface, just, you know, just asking for your blessing on what it is and just know that, you know, there may be, you know, a week or two change. It's not going to be set in stone, but that's kind of where we're looking for what to accomplish.
Do you have a motion for this, Mary?
I do, and I just wanted to mention to Christina because she was good enough to review it to make sure I didn't miss anything. But I did add one thing since you reviewed it. And that was the ability to make sure that you had, you could make amendments to the timeline. I wanted to be sure you had that. So, one, just that you can see it, actions in Village Hall project timeline, but that you could use Rule 26 again to amend the timeline as needed. So, yeah, and there's, we have to make those two changes with the elevation. So, I've got, I think I drafted something for this. So, approve the proposed Village Hall project timeline inclusive of all provisions and authorize the administrator to take actions necessary to carry out the project plan, including proposed amendments to the plan after consulting with the council using Rule 26. And replace line three, facade option B, with facade option six and alternative option four.
I'll write it to you, just let me try to remember what I just said. Send it to you.
You're going to put it right in the timeline?
Yeah, and then I'll send it to you.
Okay, further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right, Christina, you're going to talk now about...
Yes.
Project expediter and define roles authorized administrator amend contracts.
Yeah, so this one's a little bit hairy. If you go back to your... Well, go back to the dispute resolution policy and just look at the statutes and each of them. This, what I'm getting ready to say, I just...
Where's the dispute resolution policy?
The new business.
In new business, okay.
Page in person.
Okay, the $300,000 one.
If you turn your page to the statute that's in, where I have all the writing.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So, I know the number, I'm sorry, letter D is the single-prime method. But while we're going through this, I'm just going to highlight this portion right here. The very first page of that statute defines the different types of contracts. Again, going to the single-prime bidding is what I would recommend. I think that that's been recommended in the past. That is just the easiest, cleanest way to do it. You hire a general contractor, they sub everything out. So, on number, on letter D, that's where the basis for that comes from. Turn the page.
Did you guys already decide on this last year?
Yeah.
I mean, I remember, yeah, I mean, I remember being at that meeting and listening.
The bottom, the bottom of the second page talks about a project expediter that can, you know, handle disputes and certain things within a contract for management of it. I would recommend the architect be approved for the project expediter. Since I don't know exactly what they need to be defined as their duties, if y'all don't mind giving me the authority to work with Councilmember Scoot and Mayor Quinno Thursday at the architect meeting, then we can better define the role and come up with a contract amendment that's needed for them.
I'm fine with that, but I would, I would tell you spending tens of thousands of dollars to have somebody drive over and look at work that the county is about to inspect is throwing money in the wind.
Well, my thought process is really them coming up, they are, they have a two-month, two-a-month visitation according to the current contract. I'm more or less thinking of in terms of overseeing the RFP process or invitation bid, coming up with the alternates, helping us with that language.
Oh, sure, yeah, that I agree with. When you're talking about coming out visiting the site.
Yeah, I say we keep that too, what's in our existing contract. I'm more on the lines of some of the RFP process, what I just mentioned, and also to help us in the evaluation of the vendors and looking at the criteria that we set up from a status standpoint, just overseeing the process as a whole.
Do you have a motion for that?
Yeah, if y'all are okay with us talking about that Thursday and better defining that Thursday, I'm okay with that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Can you just, for the sake of having a motion?
Is that a consensus or...
Make a motion to do that.
Or so moved. Alls in favor?
Aye.
And then last but not least, is everybody okay with the single prime again?
Yep.
Can we just make a motion for that?
Motion to use the single-prime construction model in the RFP.
Which was already decided, Emily.
Alls in favor? Motion passed.
It does put it all nicely on the menu, but it's very...
So, we're back to unfinished business. Consider for approval of the website proposal recommendation?
Yeah, and if you don't mind, Mayor Quinno, I'll take over for this. Barbie has prepared a really nice recommendation. She spent a lot of time doing this and I really appreciate her effort. She's actually had a lot of conversations with the consultant to try to pick the best options. She's done background checks and called to give reference checks and all that stuff. So, I applaud her efforts in doing so. At this time, looking at the bids that we, that she's recommending, which I think is the best option that she's got recommended for purposes of making sure that we have full access to that website design if the company sells or if something happens. I think that is the best option. Looking at the $20,000 in lieu of me really trying to scrape money together to get this project down for Village Hall, I'm recommending that we go with her recommendation and put that into the budget for consideration for the next fiscal year and allow it to start in the fall. Y'all are okay with that? Just with everything we've got going on, I really need to save as much as we can in certain areas, so...
Okay.
I'm in favor of that. I mean, I like the idea, but it does, it's got a pretty steep, probably needed, but steep. If as long as you guys are fine going another six months or so...
Yeah, and they can split it between fiscal years, but, you know, a couple of months isn't going, I don't think it's going to really make a difference, you know, one way or the other, waiting till July 1 or, you know, so it's, I don't think it's going to make that much difference.
And did, did you, did they say which government facilities use it?
Well, right now, they just, they just did Town of Stallings.
Okay.
They did the City of Conahthlis.
Okay.
They have a history with the City of Concord, almost 15 to 20 years. They've, they've done their, their website from the start. They also have done Town of Granite Quarries.
And have we talked to anyone from there? Because I know your Granite Quarry you're familiar with, right? You would be familiar with. So, you reached out to them and they seem to be happy?
Yes, they seem to be happy with theirs. The one thing that, that did resonate when I talked with a lot of them is they're a little slow in meeting their overall deadline for website launch because they encourage community input with the, with the website, and so that takes a little bit of time to get that established.
I was happy about the platforms on that for you.
Yes, yes, and, and I looked at the Town of Stallings and I would encourage you to go and look at theirs. I like the, the flow of that and I like, I like how it's neatly displayed. And the, the beauty of this company is our audio, I don't have to spend staff time trying to convert it to, to an audible, audible method in order to upload it to our website. It's, I take it from the MP3 player straight to the website. So, that's, that's going to really save a lot of time and we'd be able to, to, to put a lot of the archive stuff that we, that we just don't have time to, to, to get on there.
No, that's important. So, we'll start working on notes and things that we need to start preparing for that launch.
But we will, we'll talk about it in the budget.
Talk about it in the budget. So, we're not officially going through with it today. We're just going to go ahead and start developing things at no cost. And then at the point where we approve the budget for next year, we will officially air contract or not.
You had, you had me at delay. We're, we're good to go with that. Thank you for that work. That was really nice.
So, we're not going to approve anything until July 1?
Yeah, or budget.
So, the budget meeting?
Yeah, which will be June 30th, yeah.
We'll have our discussions again.
Yeah. We're going to talk about the budget meeting in a month.
I lost my place here, Seven. Okay. Consider the approval for RAB lighting plan C because we polled B.
And as you saw in the memo, if we don't go with the suggested lighting plan, it's going to be a lot more costly than what we're prepared to do right now, which will have to be part of those budget discussions.
So...
I mean, it's still not attractive, but I thought these were going to go in the middle of the roundabout, not on the side.
No, so let me ask you something. So, do they provide, what, what is, is this just pricing we're looking at like this? Or is this something that DOT comes, or, because I know when we did this in our neighborhood, we paid for the light posts.
No, we do not pay.
So, we don't...
The pole's already there. They do recommend, I think it was three or four new poles.
Okay.
We don't have to do those, so we can start with...
But if we want to go to a different post, that's where you're saying we're going to spend the money, right?
Big post or light.
Okay, so my question to you would be is what is the cost of what the posts that they provide? Okay, but what...
I think Joe's asking who we give credit for them.
Exactly.
And to apply to...
So, if that post has to cost them something.
I don't understand.
The post has to cost them, say, $1,000 to put the post in, even though they're not charging us, because they're actually charging us, my understanding is they charge you per post monthly or whatever because there's electric going through there. And that's how they, they get the, right?
The pole's already existing, so the poles don't cost anything. Installing the fixture and having that, that light there, they charge $20 a month roughly.
Right.
So, roughly, it's $2,000 a year.
Okay. I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to, because I don't care for these posts in that area. I'd rather try to figure out something else we look at. And I think there's, there's got to be a cost to putting their bare bones in. And I'm saying, let's look at what would look...
Christina's already saying that the posts are literally already up.
They're just those round, same, but they're already up there.
He's just attaching...
And you've just thrown a light on them.
Kim and Christina are right. It wasn't clicking in my head. I thought it was a new post.
No, 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 no.
These already exist. All they're doing is adding the...
Adding a light to them.
There's, there's, I think, three that he's recommending to install.
And there's nine total, right?
Yeah, and I can tell him, I can tell him to just go ahead and install the lights on the ones that are existing and don't stop, install new, new poles.
Because poles are already there, so literally all we're doing is just helping light it.
Correct.
So, I mean, we should at least get some light over there because the poles are already there.
I understand. I'm just saying, is, is it makes sense to, or do we wait for land use plan? I mean, what are we, we're trying to create an ambiance there.
They can be removed.
That's right.
I had one removed at my property.
Okay.
It had been there for years. They all, they all got it, left there, put one up, and when it was time, they just can't remove it for free.
I would say for safety, it's much better to put them in.
Yeah, and then, and then we can do something pretty when we're figuring out the, our landscaping in the roundabout.
Because there should be a pedestrian lighting plan that gets back.
Yeah, it's just dark.
Right, this is just, we talk about, this is like that big 50-foot overhead light, right?
Yeah.
It's way out there and it's running off of the juice and turning there.
And again, the poles are already there, so it's not like they're going to go in and stick these...
Okay.
And we can't paint these, right?
We will have...
Need the boy scout.
We will have some costs we heard that we didn't budget for this year. I feel like I could probably move some money around and cover it, but just so you know, there is the chance that I may have to come back for a budget amendment for roughly $2,000, so... I think we'll be fine, but...
So, do we need to vote on that?
Any motions?
That would be great.
Motion to approve the roundabout lighting plan as presented.
Further discussion?
Minus the three new ones.
Okay.
Just the existing ones.
So, there's a total of six?
Right.
Yeah, we can always add the three whatever.
Okay, further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have discussion consideration of charter change information. Melanie?
The process is the same that we recently went through. I just kind of laid it all out for you. When I said recently, renter helped me adopt the resolution to consider allowing the charter to change to allow the mayor to vote in all matters, not just in case of the tie. So, even if you want to put it on the ballot, you still follow that same process. You just say this ordinance, you know, when you vote on it, that it'll pass or not pass based on, based on a vote of the people. And then it gets kind of confusing when you talk about changing the mode of election in terms of you all, because I believe this is what you discussed the last meeting is maybe dividing up into districts. So, you can have at-large and districts where you have to be a resident of the district and only the people that live in that district vote for you, or you have to be a resident of that district, but everyone votes for you. And there's various combination you can do of using that. For at-large, you can't have more than one-half the population be at-large seats. Stallings would, for at, if you want at-large numbers, if you want to do electoral district, districts, then at-large can't be more than one-half of the seats.
So, you have four districts, you only have two at-large.
Right, okay, got it. Right.
Couldn't have three at-large and then four districts.
Stallings recently went through this because of the new census. The population had changed and there was a lot new neighborhoods and there was concern that, you know, a certain, some neighborhoods or sides of the town were represented more than others. So, they contracted with CCOG and they came in and using that census numbers, and this I think they did in 2014, they drew the lines trying to keep neighborhoods together and not body neighborhoods up, so they have one person. But when you have neighborhoods on two sides of the street, that might not be possible. But ultimately, it was council's decision to approve those maps. And what happened with them is that there was two sitting council members that were then in one district, so at the next election, one of them, you know, had to lose. And I think he, it was, gosh, 10 or 12 votes, it was really close, maybe 20. But that, that was something they knew kind of had to happen. So, Barbie had some information on there about the price from CCOG. That's, I think, around $3,000. If that's something you want to consider. I mean, there's, there's a lot because there's total six different ways you can do it. You can keep it how you have it, or you can divide into districts. And then again, there's a conversation of do you want to add seats at all?
Right. When you talked to them, what did they say the timeframe for that was?
I was asked to get pricing.
A couple, I would say a couple of months at least, probably two or three months.
Okay.
Who, who does the redistricting?
COG.
COG does?
No, they don't, they just present plans.
They have ideas.
You decide, ultimately, council has to vote on it and say, move this line, keep that neighborhood together. I mean, it's ultimately your decision. But the idea is to try to keep the same number of people right. Yeah, as nearly as possible.
Oh, sorry. Do we have, would we need a budget amendment to do something like this? Because it would have to be done soon, right? If we wanted to have it done for the next electoral?
$3,000, all right.
We could pull it from contingency. Y'all have, don't quote me on this, but I think it's roughly $10,000 left in contingency.
Do we first have to decide one more or the same number of seats? I mean, what's the logical order here?
Each, each of these different topics would be a separate resolution of intent and a separate ordinance that appear on the ballot separately. So, I think you need to deal with them all separately. So, whether or not you want to add people and whether or not you want to go into districts.
So, that could be weird to have people saying yes...
Makes it tough when you're, well, you're not doing it all in the same, you're, you're putting it in place.
Vice versa?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Robyn. I'm sorry. Is it possible that the voters could say no to adding additional council members, but yes to redistricting, which if we have established more than four districts, but we only have four council members, that gets hinky.
That's why I don't think, yeah, I don't, I don't think it gets done all in the same time of voting because I think you establish how many people you want to have. And then for the next elections, like, oh, then you know, okay, we need, you have three, four spots open.
But, but we don't necessarily, I mean, you don't have to have the people vote on it and avoid...
Unless you receive a referendum petition, that's correct.
Well, I'm saying, I mean, if council, if we could, if we got public support behind it on or whatever and, and had, you know, where nobody was challenging it, that people said, "That sounds like a good idea, that's, you know, that sounds like a thing." We don't have to go through, we could eliminate that step.
Correct.
Which would cut down time wise.
Here's the thought, this is a question that's in the survey. Does that meet any timelines that anyone had in mind?
I don't think, yeah. Survey wouldn't be an official...
Right, you still have to have a public hearing.
You still have a public hearing.
He just needs to get in, get an idea if that's...
Whether or not the public was behind it or not.
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, whether the public was behind it or not.
I mean, there's part of me that would say that's a great idea. My only worry with surveys in general, and we're kind of seeing this in the current one, is that when something's got a lot of context, needs definition, if there's no way to convey what a district might mean, the answers that you get back are not necessarily reliable. That's, that would be my worry, right? I'm not saying it's out of the question. We would just have to keep that in mind if you add it to a survey. Like, for example, you know, are you in favor of districts? You might turn around and hear, "Yeah, sure," but then, you know...
No one knew what it means yet.
The nuance, yeah, they might not know what, necessarily what that means.
I feel like the reality of public opinion starts with the council. So, if we all agree that this is a good idea, chances are there's not going to be public pushback.
Yeah. Normally, that would be the, you would think that would be the, because I mean, we're, we're elected representatives of people because we theoretically hold the same values that they hold, they feel, when they elect us. I would think they would, you know, again, we're in representative democracy, you know, representative, not pure democracy as far as people who vote on every single thing. You know, we don't have to get the people to vote on every single thing we do, but...
Well, you guys have heard me say this before, you know, at the time when it was proposed, I was not going to take on another issue, but that charter, the last charter amendment took on a life of its own. But I think one of the questions I have here is if we're, if we are going to do it, I think that having public input meetings and scheduling that and making it part of...
Well, yeah, I think you have to have public input, right?
Well, you have to have public hearing.
But I mean, like a public input, yeah.
Well, my, my point was like the last one, we didn't all agree. So, you know, I tell a friend, they tell two friends. You can push that. If we all agree and we think this is a good idea...
Yeah, we've done it in the past where we all agreed and never heard anything from anybody.
Yeah, maybe, that's true, that's true.
It never went anywhere over here, yeah.
It starts at this table whether or not we all want it, and I'm...
I mean, that's something we have to...
Can we go around in the table and find out what everyone's thinking? Because I'm not really sure if I know what everyone was thinking.
I mean, well, I guess I was the one who brought it up, but I think, you know, the districts, I would like to see, I would say probably four districts and two at-large, you know. Well, no, I'm wrong on that.
Four or six, yeah.
Well, personally, I mean, I, I think we should have a five-member council.
Five-member council?
Yeah.
Five?
Yeah.
Or six?
No, five, I think.
Yeah?
Five plus the mayor? So, just adding one person?
Well, five, five plus the mayor and the mayor only votes in a, in a tie.
There'd never be a tie in the five vote.
Five member plus the mayor.
Which I believe is what Waxhaw is.
That, that's what ninety-three percent of North Carolina-
Yes, the mayor of Springs, this is including the mayor. Mayor of Springs has seven, Wingate has six, Waxhaw six, Weston Chapel five, Stallings seven, Monroe seven, Indian Trail six, Marshallville six, Weddington five, Unionville six, Lake Park six, and Henry French four.
So what's the-
Statistically, you can have between three and twelve.
Out of all those numbers, three thousand, twelve, what was the most popular? Was it six?
It's a six.
I heard six a lot.
She's going from like a local area? I, I-
This is Union County, yeah, I'm, this is Union County, that's where you are.
I went, well, I went to the, the school of government site and they have like a database, because it's a school of government, and they have a database of all the different forms of government. And so what, what I did is I put any government between one thousand, a population of one thousand, and ten thousand.
Sure.
And I even trimmed it to two thousand. And it was ninety-three percent, I was shocked, ninety-three percent of governments in that size have six, what Nick said, they have five-member council, the way you put it, plus a mayor. The mayor just, the mayor only votes in a tie, but there was no information, at least that I could understand, that had been coded differently, on districts. That was the only question I did get.
So is your five plus one, six, the same as the six you just mentioned?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you both came to the same conclusion?
Yeah, I think so.
But, yeah, so five, so as long as you have full council, there'll never be a tie.
That's right.
So you don't have full council when the mayor breaks the tie?
I was surprised by that, to be honest. I was shocked.
And I also think the, the districts are, are kind of important in the way that, you know, you, you kind of, like the way the, the south end of Marvin really has, you know, everybody, all the representing seems to come from the, the north end, you know, from Martin Creek. I mean, I, me and Ross were on the same block, for God's sakes. I mean, Anthony and, and Ron are on, it's a block and a half from each other. I mean, so I think you spread out the representation so that people have, you know, more representation. They feel like they have more representation in their area, if they have some local thing that, you know, pertains to them, you know, and-
Encourages them to, to be, to participate too. I found like over twelve years, we've seen some neighborhoods that kind of go dormant and then all of a sudden will come up again. And this way, by making sure that they've got a position they have to fill, I'm hoping it kind of keeps it at the top of their mind in terms of having a district.
Well, that's what I was going to say, is what happens if somebody in that, like, nobody runs in a district?
That's a, that's a fair question.
Well, I mean, if nobody runs and somebody's already sitting on that seat, they'd be a holdover until-
That's true.
Again, can you appoint?
I mean, you could, but it's, but I feel like if, like, who's going to want to be appointed if they don't want to run? You know what I'm saying? Like, like if they didn't run, like, does that make sense?
Usually, people go out and encourage, like, don't pick someone, is what I've seen. I'm not saying every case, but usually, I've seen it before where the final period comes and no one does, and then, you know, they find someone for a write-in or-
I mean, if, if, like, say the next election of, you know, if I didn't run and, and Mary didn't run, it'd be two seats open. If, if nobody ran, we'd both be holdovers then until there was-
Yeah, but if you resigned, and you're like, I'm out, then, like, then there's, you know-
But I mean, still, you know, well, then it would be an appointment. I don't know if the governor would appoint for us, I mean, if, or, you know, if they had to.
The council could appoint, yeah. The council could appoint somebody.
But I'm just saying, like, if we set up districts in like, you know, ten years down the road, somebody in district two, nobody runs, then what do you do?
Are we big enough to do that, districts like that?
I, I mean, I feel like if it's only five-
I assume you would just clump neighborhoods together, right? Based on where they are geographically located, you'd say-
And population-based, right. So it, you know, one district could be a lot smaller, could be like two subdivisions, where another one might be eight subdivisions, but the same number of population.
Same number of population.
So if we're all in agreement of, if we're going to go this route on the structure of it, which would be five and one, would the next step be then to pay the three thousand to see what districts look like?
But I mean, is, are the numbers five and one? I mean, I don't know. I mean, I kind of feel like if the numbers are five and one, do we really, I don't know, do we need districts? I feel like if it was more like six and one or seven and one.
One being the mayor, six, so you're, you're looking at a six.
Yeah.
Council.
Yeah, so seven with the mayor. I think going back to, I mean, I'm asking, I don't know. Point is, is if you first want to decide if you want more council members and then later decide if you want to do districts, that'll determine how you move to your next steps. Or if you want to do them simultaneously.
I'm glad you brought that up, because there's one question, I'm, I'm not sure if I understood it, but I'm a little bit concerned about the idea that, not concerned isn't the right word. I'm trying to wrap my head around this idea of separate amendments, right, and then separate intentions, because we, or it feels like there's different, like Nick has offered a kind of a package, right, that he feels would work. And yet, it sounds like the voters in the end could choose one thing, but not another thing. And so therefore, are you really getting at the end what you were hoping for?
If, if we were going to present it, if we would present it in either or, it would be that we're going to have five seats, you know, five council members, the mayor doesn't vote and not accept in a tie. We would, we're not giving them really a choice, we're sort of saying, this is the amendment, you know?
You're not really, you wouldn't be amending the charter and dealing with the mayor, because right now, he doesn't vote, so that wouldn't even be-
Well, but you, you're changing the number of-
You're just adding, right, you're adding a seat. And then another conversation or amendment then would be, are you doing districts or not?
Right, but you're not asking them to vote on it. I mean, if we're, we're hoping to present it as this is what we're going to do and not have, and hopefully, you know, if we all agree on it, then probably not going to get a lot of kickback from all of us.
I see.
In agreement, there's nobody to-
And then the districts also, you have to decide then if you want the representative, right, they have to live in that district. Does everyone vote for them, or do only the people in that district vote for them?
I, I can't, I mean, I'm only going by what I'm used to, up in New York. You know, the representative lives in the district and only people in that district can vote for them. You know, they represent that district and, you know, their neighbors basically are the ones that would vote them in.
The voting district.
Yeah, because why have a district otherwise?
And then the at-large member, obviously, the at-large and the mayor would run just, you know, billowy wide, I mean, you know, so you'd have-
So what have, maybe you know the answer, Nick. So let's say we did this, and as a primary capital for this election, or maybe it's ready for the next election, board of elections just puts two more boxes and it's shown as district one or two?
Yeah.
The ballots get tricky though. The ballots get tricky, because all ballots would not necessarily, correct me if I'm wrong, be the same.
Yeah.
Because the ballot, if you're coming from a district and you're voting in the Marvin School area, you've got only so many people to choose from. And then if you're across town at Weddington Chase, you have that little area you're going to, and that will read a little different, because otherwise, it'll get very confusing.
It's almost like, it's almost like congressional election, you know, you-
Right.
Different ballot based on-
Yeah.
Way of congressional election.
That's why I think it's going to take time to, you know, it's just, it's get to where-
Or they just assign a more, more poll places. Correct?
Yeah.
I don't say that, I think they should be different ballots.
Yes, because based on where you live, when you go and give your information, they will have your ballot for you. They say, okay, this one, I think that's how that works.
Chances are, that would probably be how it would work out, like, you know, district Q would be for Kensington, and district L would be for Sandy Ridge, and district A would be for Marvin's Elementary.
Because right now, for early voting, right, you can go anywhere and you can, and then you need the ballot that you need, yeah.
But they, they, board of elections doesn't have a problem with multiple ballots for one town?
No. I wouldn't think so. I don't know that, but I would think so. I mean, other places do.
Do, yeah.
The other, and then I'll, I'll say this, the only answer is, if we go to vote and, and we're asking to change the charter, which is what they did twice before, when they went to take the mayor to a four-year, then they went back to a two-year and stuff. And I was against going to a four-year the whole time, because, because of the number of people we have in, in five. So, you know, changing the charter on our own is, you know, I think it's, I think the people that came spoke clearly in the meeting and said, you know, let us vote on it. Is what, is what I remember clearly from all of that. So, and I'll just say that because that's what happened.
Two examples you brought up about, we just, what the charter changed for the term of the mayor and the mayor's visiting, nobody showed up and we just did it on our own and never went, nobody even heard about it, nobody even knew about it.
Right.
I mean, I, I agree with you, like, we tried to do it on our own, people got upset. It may have been because we were divided on it, but I've heard from some of those people that said, I don't care what the topic is. And they said, I don't care what the topic is, but I don't want you guys to change the charter unless we get to vote on it. So if we want to do something, I just feel like, because so many people came out and it wasn't just that specific issue, it was the fact that we were trying to do it without their input. So my opinion is, if we want to change something, we, you know, do all the steps that we need to do and then we put it on the ballot for them to vote on. That's my opinion. And, and I'm all for adding people and, you know, looking at the district thing or whatever, I'm, I'm fine with doing that. But my feeling is, because they spoke so loudly, I heard them, I feel like we should let them vote on how many, I mean, if we give them, you know, we can give them, this is your option, do you want it or do you not want it? But however we decide to word it, I think that the-
So then in two years after that, because they vote on it, and then two years after that comes the next election, and it's like, okay, we're either staying at four-
Correct.
Plus a mayor, or we're going to six plus a mayor, or five plus a mayor, whatever it is.
Whatever, yeah.
You know?
Either or, nothing would, I guess, put it to the next election.
Right, before it-
But I agree with both, my, I agree with both Nick and Kim. I, I'm a fan of putting it on, on the ballot, let them decide. But I also under, you know, I agree with Nick that if it's something that's agreeable, you know, we were all elected by these votes, if we're unanimous, you know? The hard part is what Noe said, and that we have to separate them, and I don't know how that works. If you have to separate two different items, number of council members and districts, and you confuse voters and you get them all in favor of one and not the other, what happens then?
See, I, 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 I look at the whole, you know, figure out the number, all right? We had the issues when you were, we just had four and one persons out and stuff. So figure out the number that works for me, whether it's five, six, doesn't matter. The whole, the whole district, drawing district lines, you get into, I mean, they're doing it, look across the country, they're doing it where they're drawing lines, because they know what, you know, oh, it's got to be this neighborhood and this neighborhood, because they know they're going to get certain people, so. And there's a lot of gerrymandering that happens and, and, you know, people that are sitting, my understanding is, yeah, council deciding on how they're splitting up these districts and stuff. And, and, and that can change, because they can change the districts later on. It doesn't necessarily stay in that district the whole time. Those districts can move and change based on who you have in council, believe it or not.
Oh, I'm sure Nick's seen a fair amount out of New York.
Yeah, so that's my concern. I, I was, I was just trying to get to a number necessary, rather than, you know what, hey, and I'll say this on the record, if you're in a neighborhood and you're complaining that you're not getting attention, but nobody in your neighborhood's running? I mean, y- y- you got to get involved some way or another, whether it start as, as a volunteer and stuff, but don't complain that nothing's getting done for your little area of the town, but, and nobody wants to step up and represent it. It's, it's a big step to do what we're doing as far as getting out there in front of the public, taking the arrows and all of that. But, you know, I mean, so the whole districting thing, I, I, I almost think we're almost too small for that. I think, you know, you're going to have times when you have new, two council people or three in the same, you know, in the same neighborhood. I mean, there's some big neighborhoods here.
Well, I think what Nick's trying to avoid is what he's seen happen, and it's exactly what you said, sort of in reverse. You have a neighborhood that doesn't like something that's going on, a certain roads, right? My road didn't get done, but Cantiff did. And they're hot over it. Well, what happens sometimes is a neighborhood that never ran for council, all of a sudden, they've got two people running for council and mayor, because they want to dictate, this one neighborhood wants to dictate the future of Marvin for the next two to four years.
Right.
I think that's, is that what you're trying to avoid? Because you've seen it happen, right? So, of course, I now agree with you.
Well, that, that's why I did not like the mayor going to a four-year term, because that mayor is running with two other council people and that stays four years. You can do a lot of damage in the town, whereas keeping it at two years for the mayor has hit, that mayor always changing and running with two other council either. It's, 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 I mean, you run in teams, right? They seem to be most successful when you run as a team, but that team of three, especially in a five-council setting like we have, four councilmen and a mayor, you can control if you put that to it. So I was never in favor of a mayor going to four years. I think two years, even though it's a lot, it's more of a pain in the butt, because you're out there more often. But I just, I, I'm more in favor, back to my original thing, is not trying to change the charter on our own, but just putting it in the vote and then in two years, the town basically says, no, we're good with four plus one, or we're good with six. And the whole line dividing and all that, I mean, we can look at it, I mean, it's an extra three thousand dollars to look at how it would, but in the end, that council's going to vote on it and stuff.
Can you repeat that part again, Joe? Because I wanted to be sure I understood what, what you, what you were thinking. You said, I'm more in favor of, and I wasn't, I want to be sure I understand where everyone's at.
Well, I'm more in favor of just putting it out to the vote of how many we would like to, how many spots are open for a council? Like, moving from a five and, and, and putting it to a vote rather than a charter change, meaning saying that, oh, by the way, this next election, we're going to, if we had time, and I don't even know if we had time, but by this next election, instead of three people running, two councilperson and a, and a mayor, you actually would be either three people in the council position and a mayor, or four people in a, a ma, a council position and a mayor, to get to the six or the five, whatever we decide.
Twelve.
Does that make sense?
So are, are you in favor of increasing the council?
I, I would be, yes, yes.
Yeah, one, two spots.
I actually, I actually like, I mean, I actually like the number six, I, you know, six council members and stuff.
Six council members?
Yes, that's, you know, but it does, I mean, if you want to go to five, it doesn't matter, yeah, but-
I just always get confused, but, so, six plus the mayor is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, you'll, you'll, you know, it's, it's not a, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I think, I'd be fine with five or six, it, it wouldn't really matter. I mean, it's not a, but I think we should have more than four.
Nick, you were, you were five and one, six total?
Yeah, I'm five and one, but I, I don't know how this is going to sound, but, but, but in some ways, I feel like, you know, we're, we're elected to make decisions. And if we always now go out to the public for every decision we're going to make and say, what do you think about this? I mean, yeah, we want them to have input, I certainly know, saying I don't want their input. But, you know, I think if we don't, if we can't make a decision, or if we're scared, afraid to make a decision on our own and, and, you know, we're kind of shunning our responsibility, because that's what we're elected to do, to make, you know, to make decisions, to do things. And again, we don't have a pure, whatever, democracy where you go out to, everybody votes on every single thing. I mean, if we did it and people didn't like it, they could start a referendum to, to say, no, we don't want that. But I mean, it's like, I just sometimes feel like we're-
I agree with you, with what you're saying, but I have to agree with him too. I just feel like there's certainly, I thought of a term, consent of the governed, that's what it's called.
What's it called?
Consent of the governed, right? That you move with consent of the governed, right? That we as a body move with consent.
It's like voting ourselves a raise.
But, what did you say?
It's like voting ourselves a raise, that's the first thing that happened two years ago, right? And in the paper, it came out as a twenty-five percent raise.
Well, this is a little like the, the facade we were just talking about.
We just did it, yeah.
You know, twenty people are going to have different opinions, but, you know, in New York.
I guess what, it probably has a lot to do with the temperature in the country, I'm going to guess. But I feel like right now, the idea of amending a government, what I've been able to sense, or change, like, I think, I understand with what you're saying in most cases, but I feel when you're talking about how you're governed or how that government is set up, it feels a little more sensitive now. And I don't know if that's just a reflection of, you know, strains or tensions in the country or other issues, but it feels like there's a particular sensitivity about anything that impacts democracy and representation. That's the sense I'm getting.
Yes.
Yeah, so the idea of, so I'll, I'll put my down, line down here. I'm, oh, I would be okay with passing something as a council, but not without some intensive public input and support for it. Otherwise, I can't see how we wouldn't go to a referendum.
So, so let me ask you this.
Two questions.
Okay, one sec, or if I ask you this, would, putting it to a vote to add more people on the council, wouldn't that be the people speaking? So either we're going to stay four plus one, a mayor, or we're going to go to five plus one, or six- So either we're gonna stay four plus one, a mayor, or we're gonna go to five plus one, or six plus one? Which, you know, give them a choice. I mean, that's giving, the public comes to speak. They don't have to come to our meeting, but it's coming to speak about, we're changing the charter in the form of more council. Is that not them speaking?
I think so, but I, this is just my sense of what I saw happening, listening even to, you know, I think John Barisic came up that day and brought up a lot of good points, things I hadn't really heard from people before. And I just, a lot of the sentiments that I felt were they wanted a conversation or a discussion. I don't know, I think that there's this idea that the public hearing, they come, they speak, and then they leave, and there isn't any exchange, as opposed to a town hall or a conversation where everyone's talking about the pros and cons. It has to be organized or it'd be a free-for-all, but it's something a little more interactive than just simply public hearing. Uh, that's the sense I'm getting.
What's the timeline on the two different options?
And that's...
Whether we just do it or whether it's a ballot, what's the timeline look like?
We were trying to figure out if we could do it. I think we, it gets tight because you have to decide by, what, June 15th if you're even gonna run.
Well, yeah, but that's to run. Like, for us to put something on a ballot, I don't think we have to know by June, right? Because, because we're not adding a person, we're just adding an, an item to the ballot. So I couldn't imagine it would have to be when somebody has to sign up.
Curious how they line up as far as ballot versus if we were just to do it, you know, if they're within a month of each other.
I think there's something like an, is it 90 days it has to be?
Yeah, two, before 90 days, yeah.
Before the 90-day mark.
Yeah, any amendment affecting the election of council members shall be adopted and, and approved at least 90 days before the election.
So then, so then that's us approving it, so then how long do they need to get it on the ballot? 90 days?
Probably, I don't think it's, they would need any longer than that.
I think that's probably why they set the deadline, right? To make sure they have enough time to put it on the ballot.
Right.
So if that was the case, the next election is November 2019, right? Hold the mantle, that is fine. So, so essentially, if you want, you have to have it done by...
90 days before.
August, which would mean, that's enough time, I think, to probably organize a few public...
Well, I'm just saying, but the, whatever we, whatever was, it would be the election, you know, to, to see if they want it, then there would actually be...
It would then change in '21.
'21, so it'd be three years down the road before you'd see the change happen.
Even if, oh, right, yeah, okay, because it would be on the ballot, right?
Right.
But I'm not talking about the ballot, but sorry, maybe I'm, maybe I misspoke. So I'm thinking if you do those public input meetings and it, and people are comfortable with it, it wouldn't be, we, there might be a chance we'd get away without the referendum. That's what I'm wondering, is if there's just enough public input, right, that we get support, then perhaps just passing the amendments would be okay. What I was trying to say before is that's the only scenario I can imagine feeling comfortable, passing it without a referendum, is knowing that we've had a lot of public input and we have decent support for it.
I mean, I like the idea of having the public input down, whatever we're gonna do. But for me, my vote is gonna be put it on the ballot. Which is, which is how I...
I've got experience. I agree with, I agree with all of them. Can I, can I throw something out there? Would you all consider recessing this? I, I don't think I've put enough thought into it. I mean, reset, are we...
Table.
Yeah, table this, yeah, we can table this.
Absolutely.
Why, if you wanted to recess and, and come back to it later in the week, or...
We can finish the rest of the agenda, you mean? Like, what time is it?
It's past our, it's past our hard stop.
Okay, now we're definitely 10.
Yeah, I'm trying to...
So, let's do this, let's do this.
I'm set for Taco Bell, I'm gonna Taco Bell.
Well...
I got a mindset for 9:30 and I wanna go home.
See, I told you we shouldn't have set 9:30.
Still...
Add it to the work session.
I think we can add this to a work session.
Well, but, but actually, Robert brings up a good point, just because I feel like we're putting so much off, like, this agendas are getting longer and longer. Is there a possibility, just to throw this out there, that we could meet again this week and finish this stuff on this agenda?
We're getting close.
The only thing that's left is...
Yeah, we only got one item left.
Yeah?
Two things.
Where are we at?
Well, this, my, my, the reason I'm asking for recess is because this is a, this is a big item. And I, I know I need to think about it more.
ROP changes.
I know, I know what I suggested. I, I feared it was gonna take us three or four meetings to, you know, talk about it, you know, work sessions or whatever, I never expected that.
Yeah, I gotta, I know, probably, my biggest fear, we take it to public, and that's fine. We can get that public input. We get basically the showing how many people showed up for, um, what the, the town hall drawings or whatever it was. There wasn't many people that showed up for it. I don't think it's, 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 it's that. But if you put it to a vote, then everybody's looking at it going, well, there must be a reason that they're asking for this. And we're giving the public a choice to go to five, six, or stay at four.
I mean, I'm fine, and I think it's a good idea to tell people why we're doing it and have a conversation with them. But for me, I just feel like the ballot is...
I, I, I think to your point, it spoke clearly to me in the meetings and stuff. They were so adamant and so upset about changing anything. And here, you know, we looked at, I looked at them and saying, wow, we changed it twice right bef, and nobody even showed up. But, but, you know, again, it goes, and I think this could be...
But I mean, this is our first real conversation about this, so...
Right.
To your point, this is gonna take three to four meetings.
Yeah, I'm at the meetings, I, I guess, I'm just, I'm, I'm just a little bit hung up on the thing of, again, I like, I want public input, I expect public input, but where do we draw the line then? The public, we, the public tells us what we gotta do and, you know, we can't, we don't make a decision and we're always looking to try and put it off on the public.
I think we made a whole bunch of decisions tonight and didn't put it off on the public. I think this is a big one, and people are pissed that we tried to change it before and didn't get their input. And I, I don't think, to me, I'm not willing to...
Go down that road again.
Yeah.
Can I, and I know we're gonna probably recess this, but, Kim, do you, do you have any thoughts or any ideas about what you, changes you'd like to see?
I like six council people and a mayor. So I like seven.
Seven.
Seven total.
Yeah. And I'm not sure about the districts.
Just so we can leave here all thinking, thinking about it. I'm indifferent, six total or seven total. Kim said she's seven total. Nick, you're six total.
I like six total, but I, I like five council people, I think, more because, you know, you almost have to work with each other, you know? You can't rely on the, on the mayor to break a tie or something, you know? You're sort of stuck with each other, you know, you don't really have the outlook of saying, I'll give it to the mayor, I didn't make the decision. Yeah, so I think in that way it's...
Changes the budget, all that money we make a month.
I agree with that. Bumps up the budget.
I think, I think, like I said, it changes the, the, I think it changes the, the ability to make a so-called majority, you know? Decide what majority, you know, you could have when you have three and three, or two, or two, or, you know, I think when you have five, it sort of takes that a little bit out of the picture to a point, you know? Because, again, if you, you gotta come between five years, you gotta come up with a three to two somewhere, and you're not depending on going to the mayor for, for it.
Yeah, the only thing I, the only thing I would argue with that is you can see, say, the community gets it wrong. When you're voting for a council, you got them in for four years. And if that majority is in there for four years, all right? Because you will, I don't know how they stagger it and stuff. That, that could, that could hurt versus having the six, and then you, you have, you, you can change it by just changing the slot of the mayor, or, or could possibly change with any type of thing. That's, that's the only thing, and again, that's why I was, I was against the original one.
I think with districts, sometimes there, there is a staggering because, you know, it all get elected at the same time.
Right, right.
So there is a staggering of the, of the districts where you'd have maybe two at a time, or, you know, one, two.
Yeah. I, I would, I, I, to put, put on the record, I'd be leery of the whole district thing right away because I don't know if we're there yet, but I would be in favor of putting it on the ballot to go to a higher, uh, more, more, more council members.
If you like seven.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'd prefer six and then one, and then that, that mayor's still running on every two years. And then three councilmen are running, so. So you can, meaning that you can switch the tide, if you will, e- every two years. That's what we can do now. You can switch the tide every two years. If you have a majority of three people, three council people, um, you know, it all depends on, you know. I, I, I think that's important. I think that's important especially because government, as we know, moves so slow and that there's time to, you know, i- if, if things are going wrong, we get the wrong people. And I've always said, for the people who don't want to be a part of Marvin, that are right in the heart of Marvin, they better hope we get it right every time because if you get a developer in here that wants to just do whatever they want to do, they're out of luck. I mean, we, you know, so, I mean, anyway, that's my point.
So do we, districts, because I'm, I'm, I'm almost done, just to have a general idea. Districts, were you four again? I'm not sure.
You know, as an idea, I like the idea. I, I do. I like what Nick said about it. Practice, I'm as small as we are. I don't know how it's gonna work. Melanie was right. There comes a time where, when someone doesn't run, the other two or one, depending on how structured it's running, goes and gets somebody. So now you have two like-minded people running to get it. Same thing happens if you end up appointing, if you have a majority of council, there's an empty seat. They're gonna appoint someone that, you know, generally speaking, that, that is like-minded. So it's not a perfect system in a low-population area like Marvin, but I like the idea. Do we want to, uh...
Recession?
Yeah, I think we need to recess.
Thank you for letting me hear you.
We're making a motion to table the rest of the items, which is two, the rules of procedure and discussion adoption of 5:31 meeting minutes, and then...
Do you guys want to recess?
Or table, yeah.
We're tabling. Tabling to work session.
I would say recess is available. We meet sooner than later if you guys want to.
Oh, you guys want to meet again?
And just so y'all know, our 5:31 meeting is not heavy as of now.
It's not?
No.
Really? Are you sure?
We've got those policies and procedures that we push back on to do it, so.
We're gonna do that on the 31st?
What would you rather do then?
We're not...
You want to meet sooner than later or push it to the next meeting?
I mean, the first thing we can meet this week is Friday.
That's the only way.
Well, no, just recess. We could recess.
Oh, we could now.
We could recess and reconvene.
As long as you said it.
Sorry.
Place, I misunderstood.
I misunderstood, sorry.
Thought we'd do it to finish everything.
We could recess at 1:00 o'clock in the morning if you guys want to. I have to be up again around that time.
I mean, Friday's, Friday's good.
I'm up at four.
I'm good with Friday.
No, Friday's tough for me. I was just saying, I thought it was a special meeting. I thought we needed 48 hours. I misunderstood.
Friday's not good for you.
No, no, none of, the rest of this week stinks.
Tomorrow's bad for me.
Days are due Tuesday.
Yeah, I mean, the rest of this week stinks, in the morning and at night.
14, 15.
I mean, how long do we think this is gonna take?
14, 16.
It's the time to think about it. It's gonna help, I think, through, and, what do you think, an hour, hour and a half? Is that optimistic?
Well, it's the only thing we're disc, if it's the only thing we're discussing.
Of course, we've got three things.
And rules of procedure, we have what?
Rules of procedure.
And the May 30.
The number of minutes, yeah.
We want to wait for the minutes for when you're here to...
That's fine.
Yeah.
We can table those.
So table the 5:31 minutes to the next meeting, regular meeting.
That you're gonna be here.
Um, then we are, do we, are, have we decided we're recessing?
I'm, I'm good any day except tomorrow, and I'm good next week.
What about the 16th?
About the 16th?
16.
I go out of town the next day, sorry.
What about the 15th?
I've got PRT in the morning. We can do it right after that.
Yeah, I got, I got something scheduled.
I'm no good for the 15th.
Okay, that's right. 17th? 17th?
No.
14th, I'm good.
No, no joke.
Oh, okay. So then we're getting close to the 31st, which...
What about the 14th?
14th, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good, 14th.
That's fine.
As long as it's before...
I have a lunch at, what, at 11:45, so I'll have to be done by 11:30.
Okay.
Oh, you want to do it early in the morning is what you're saying.
8:00, 9:00.
Not, nine, 9:30?
Yeah, that's fine. 9:30?
Do you have to be gone? When's your hard stop?
11:30.
You want to do 9:30?
Yeah, that's more than enough.
9:13?
I think so.
Okay.
No, we're just gonna talk about these things that are left, right?
Because we're tabling your item. So village meeting, I have what day?
The 14th at 9:30, the village hall.
So I'll make a motion to recess tonight until...
Hold on. Do, oh, so we're not gonna have action items, or we can do that too?
We can do that too.
I thought we do it all.
Yeah.
Okay, and council comments?
So let's, I'll make a motion to recess this meeting until January 14th at 9:30 a.m. To be held at Village Hall.
At 9:00 a.m.?
9:30.
9:30.
Great.
That's my motion.
So move.
Further, further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we supposed to have these back? I don't understand.
Yes.
But I want them.
Can we, yeah, that's nice.
We can, we can get the second version and they can bring the empty birkin back.
So...
Well, that means I have to order more notebooks. I don't have any other notebooks.
So my comment, just FYI, my comment to her was, a lot of these things, I want to keep the notes that I have already, so...
Don't you just take the material out and give her the notebook back?
That's what I was envisioning that you just...
But I like it in the notebook.
So you need to order about 24 of her, Kim?
24.
No, no, I can just give me another, just give me another, just give me another giant one. No, just give me another giant one, and I'll take each, like, each...
Oh, she'll just save it at the back.
Yeah.
I might have a bunch of them.
But I need a big fountain.
We need presentation. I'll, I'll get me and see the order time. I'll get me and see the order time.
Yeah. I just need, I just, but, but I can't give this to you until Monday, right?
You all need to get laptops.
No, I like to write. Bless you, Martha. I'm a writer. I like to...
Just use it.
Yeah. I know, I just, yeah, I love, I like to make notes.
I have to do it. I still feel inclined to.
You need help?
Uh, yeah, because...
I have a Kindle.
Redo the table?
Yeah, no, I don't have to do anything but put some of this stuff up, but I would be able to get out of here until 11 o'clock if I have to do this by myself.
I'll do it.
Do you, uh, Sam, a Kindle?
You know what?
But you know why? Because then I can't return back and see what happens.
I never thought that.
Be like, oh, what happens?
I gotta be honest, I miss holding a book, but I make myself hold, hold a Kindle because I have so many books at home.
Yeah, it just stores right up.
Yeah.
Well, Mike, I think we got like 354 books in a Kindle.
Oh, my gosh. Michael kill me about anymore.
We, uh, I got that, that tiny book. Have you heard of that?